Clara's gonna do the thought and McKenley's gonna do the prayer. Should we do, which order do we do this in?
Usually a thought and then-
Let's do the thought first.
Is that alright? Come on up.
Yes, please.
We need your name, rank, and serial number.
Alright, well, my name is Clara and I'm the mayor pro tem on the youth city council. And it's a little scripture, but I thought it related to our, our city a lot. So, it's in Matthew twenty-five and it's, "For I was hungered and ye gave me meat; I was thirsty and ye gave me drink; I was a stranger and ye took me in; naked and ye clothed me; I was sick and ye visited me; I was in prison and ye came to me." Our city motto is pride and progress, and one of the ways we can make progress is by serving each other. As we give to our local food banks, participate in city events, help out our neighbors, and just be kind to each other, we're going to build a strong sense of community. And this is a great thing to be proud of. Serving each other will give every resident in our city a purpose and a helping hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dear heavenly father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you that we were all able to gather here together to discuss. Please bless that we'll be able to be guided in making our decisions and that we'll be able to accomplish what's best for the community and that we will all be blessed with safety and help in the next comfortable days. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, youth city council. Uh, Councilman Took will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, mayor. Alright, please stand and repeat after me.
I would lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have some recognitions to take place tonight. This is always a fun part of our council meeting. We have LeAnn Powell and Megan Zollinger here to present something to us. I was looking for Bronco. Is Bronco, I saw Bronco earlier. Is she back there? Bronco, do you want to come up and introduce these people to us? You know them. I know you know them.
He's got a new fresh haircut. Yes, he's looking very fresh.
So I couldn't recognize him.
So, grateful to have URPA here tonight, recognize some of the great things that our city's doing. LeAnn Powell, she's the executive director of URPA. Exceptional leader. She is by far the best executive that this organization's ever had. She's amazing. She knows everybody. She's brought us all together. She's increased membership throughout the state and has got more involvement from every community that she's been a part of. And so she's amazing. We're thankful to have her here tonight. McKell is her assistant. And she's really the one that runs the ship. She's great. We love her. Appreciate her. And then I'll let you introduce Dan, because I don't know him as well.
Okay.
So, we're just thankful to have them here tonight and appreciate the time they take and what they do to make our organizational better.
Thank you, Bronco. That was very nice. Yeah, so McKell and myself, we run URPA. And then Dan Farns is the president of the Intermountain Sports Field Management Association. We did some partnering this year with SFMA and with Dan so that we could maybe do a little bit better job of providing opportunities for our parks, parks planning, maintenance-focused, Parks and Recreation professionals. So that's been a great opportunity and an opportunity to look at some other awards, one of which we'll be presenting tonight. So, appreciate the time to be on your agenda. I know there's always lots to do and a busy time, but I think it's really good too to be able to come out into the communities and honor some of your great professionals that are doing great work. So, we have about two thousand Parks and Recreation professionals throughout the state of Utah that are members of the Utah Recreation and Parks Association. And each year, as we lead up to our conference, we take nominations for a number of different awards. This year, we had over a hundred nominations. We get all of our past presidents together in a room and we carefully go through all of those award nominations. You actually have three of our past presidents in this room with Dell and Bronco and Paul. So, great representation statewide. Your, your team, Parks and Recreation team here is definitely statewide leaders and leading the way for the rest of our professionals. So, we obviously want to honor that. I would also like to say that our Parks and Recreation professionals could not do the great work they're doing without the support of administration and councils. And you know this, because a lot of you come down to our conference, but I think this community by far does the best job in the state of being involved in what's happening in Parks and Recreation and coming down to conferences and seeing really what's happening with the boots on the ground in Parks and Recreation, which I think is so very important. So, you should be congratulated and commended for the great work that you're all doing as well. I want you to imagine for just a moment, a community like Spanish Fork without any ball fields, without any trails, without any open space, not doing community events, maybe no summer rodeo or festival, no real gathering places and events for your community. And it would look like an entirely different community. And that is what your Parks and Recreation professionals are doing every day is finding ways, kind of our three pillars of our profession, our environmental stewardship, stewardship, to really look at trying to take open spaces and parks and trails and beautify them and make them safe for the public and make them places for the, the public to gather. I think for Parks and Recreation, the one kind of silver lining through the whole pandemic time was people's realization that what an important asset our open spaces and our parks and our trails are. And it's very important that we maintain those open spaces. Another pillar of what we do is health and wellness. And lots of people look at all of the fun stuff that we're doing every day and think of the fun and the community involvement, but it's really around health and wellness too. Like, how can we make our communities as healthy as possible? Because we all know when we have sickness or there's problems and it's really hard to be positive and to make progress. And so it's very important that we work to be as healthy and as well a community as we possibly can. And then the other, the other pillar is access for all. And it's really about trying to go out into our community and find ways to provide opportunities for all of our citizens. And I think you can all agree with me that your Parks and Recreation Department are doing a great job of meeting all three of those very important pillars within the community. So, we're, we're happy to be able to be here and celebrate the great work they're doing. I'm gonna do the first presentation, which is for our 2025 Outstanding Executive Professional for URPA. And that goes to none other than Dell Robinson. And as you know, Dell has been the Parks and Recreation Director here in Spanish Fork. Twenty-seven years? A very long time. Yeah, I think, we probably don't want to admit the decades that Dell and I have known each other. We kinda, I think, grew up in the Parks and Recreation world. I worked for a long time in Clinton City, a small community, and honest to goodness, I was like, okay, what are they doing in Spanish Fork? How can we steal their ideas and the things that they're doing and, and try to make our community as cool as Spanish Fork? I'm not sure that we ever did it, but you know, we were, we were aspiring to, to put together a team like Dell has put together here and to be the kind of professional that represents Parks and Recreation the way that he does. So, really appreciate your statewide leadership, the great work that you're doing. And we are honored to be here to recognize Dell Robinson as our Outstanding Executive Professional, 2025.
No speech, Dell?
I don't think so. They hear enough from me, but let me just say, it's, it's an honor to be recognized by your peers. As LeAnn mentioned, I've been at this a long time and, and she's already taken my speech away from me. And that is, the, my success is all based upon my tremendous staff and upon the administration and the mayor and the council's support. We have that here, and that's one of the neat things we've had and created as part of our culture in Spanish Fork, which is why we're successful. So, and we see that, because there are other communities that struggle with that. And we have, we have always been considered an essential service in Spanish Fork, and that's not the norm. So, I, I thank you very much. We appreciate your support. Appreciate all the work that the URPA does. They certainly have grown tremendously. And it's because of these, because of these ladies up here. But, all, this award really goes to you guys, to my staff, and I appreciate all of them. They're, they're tremendous individuals. And, and I love and appreciate all the work that they do to help, help provide the quality of life in our city, because that's what we do. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Alright, and then we'll turn the time over to Dan to do the SFMA award.
Thanks, LeAnn. Thanks, everyone, for having me. I'm the president of the Intermountain Chapters of SFMA. SFMA stands for Sports Field Managers Association. It's nationwide and becoming a global organization that we're all a part of. This is the first year that we've joined together with LeAnn's group, and we're really grateful for them for putting their arms around us and, and helping us get through some tough times. So, this is actually the first round of Field of the Year that we have been doing. This is the first time we've awarded it for the state, for the Intermountain Chapter. We had some really good applications. This one stood out. Nelson Field, baseball field, really stood out for us in the panel that chose the, the winners. I was lucky enough to catch Chase and Alberto that day, whenever that was, a while ago, when it was a lot colder. But they were out there fixing fences and, and doing things at the, at the field there. We were just really impressed with their maintenance schedule, the plans that they had to, to upgrade the fields, and just the staff in general. So, happy to award this first Field of the Year for Nelson Field for Spanish, Spanish Fork Parks and Rec. And it just says here, "In recognition of excellence in providing beautiful, high-quality, and safe sports fields and playing surfaces for 2025." So, thanks again for having us.
We'd like to thank URPA and SFMA for this award. Honestly, it's our guys that do all the planning, the field prep. They don't even let me on a lawnmower anymore. But we appreciate all their hard work and their effort. And it shows. We have one of the best baseball fields in the state to play on, and it's because of them. We invited Tad to come back, because Tad's been doing a long time, and he got it started. Alberto's now in charge, and he's taking the reins and running with it and doing a great job. We appreciate these organizations for recognizing us and recognizing our efforts and, and what a great community Spanish Fork is. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart. Appreciate that. Yeah, I was gonna say, we've come a long way since Shane Marshall was cutting grass down there. Right, right up here. If you'll get right up here. We'll stand behind you. Come on, Bronco. Paul, let's go. Paul, Paul.
Bronco, you're in the picture. Bronco. Let's not smile until Bronco's in here.
Yeah, nobody, nobody smiled until Bronco's in the picture.
See, that's why I'm here. Cory can't take pictures, so you need backup.
I can too. Okay, everyone, look at mine. And then I'll get one for, well, you can share with-
Get in here, Bronco.
Bronco.
Bronco, why are you ignoring us?
Geez, Louise.
Oh, he's difficult.
You're fired. Dale.
I just- Sorry, you've got the C crew today. And me. I'll get one to show Jack. Thanks, guys. Okay.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yes, yes. Sharon? Let's get one up here. Thank you, LeAnn. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Another picture with Sharon up here. Dale, if you'll stand up here. Come on, Sharon. You came to a meeting, finally. We need a picture.
Do you? There is no way that we're, she's gonna have to give a speech.
Oh, you're absolutely fine, too.
Sharon, come on. Speech. Very well deserved. Thank you. Those are, those are two very, very proud and important things in our community. No matter what comes back to, to Spanish Fork, whether it's commerce, whether it's so many different things that people say what we're important for, we end on, well, what makes it really nice to live here is the quality of life. And if we don't have the people doing the things that you just recognize them for, that quality of life is less, and it's, it's measurably less. And so, really from, I think I can speak for the council on this, just a heartfelt thank you for, for recognizing the good, hard, long day, long night work that so many people put in. And like Dale aptly said, not just the, the director of that department, but everybody that works in it should be very proud of the, the city they're giving to the residents and those that come through, because it's a shining star of it. And I would say, yes, definitely essential, always essential. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else?
Well done. Very deserving.
Okay, that's probably the high of our meeting, so just, just to let everybody know. Yeah, it's, it's set expectations for the rest of it, but pretty good stuff. Appreciate everybody. Yeah, no pressure, guys. I mean, you're here. Takes us to item four on our agenda, public comments. Oh, excuse me. Oh, yes, sorry. I was gonna hand that over to you.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes, thank you. Councilman, Councilman Took will take this one.
Alright, wonderful. We're excited to have with us this evening the Numis Spanish Fork royalty. Why, can I do a little brief introduction? Do you ladies mind kind of making your way to the front? I know, sorry to put you on the spotlight. Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I can't quite see who was all back there. So that's fine. Well, this is our queen. So this is Madison Smith, our Miss Spanish Fork for this year. We, just so you know, first attendant is Dakota Huland, and then second attendant, Madison Bertin. They both couldn't be here this evening, but we're so glad you are.
Yeah, I know. I'm excited to be here.
Yeah, thank you. I was, Councilman Cardon and myself were able to be there when you were crowned not too long ago at Spanish Fork High School. Wonderful evening. You did amazing, obviously. And we're just, we're proud to have you here, serving the city with us for this, this next year. Just on behalf of the Spanish Fork Organization and then you in this new capacity, could you just tell us a little bit about yourself and kind of what you're excited about and why you love Spanish Fork, or whatever else? No, no script. Just love to hear from you, get to know you a little bit.
Yes, so I'm Madeline Smith. I'm from Spanish Fork. I've lived here my whole life. I love it here. I'm Miss Spanish Fork 2025, and I'm just so excited to be able to represent this city and serve the community in all different types of ways, get to know everyone. My community service initiative is called Embrace Your Beautiful You. And it's about talking to people, young kids, young adults, adults, everyone, just about body positivity and just loving ourselves no matter what we look like. And so I'm excited to be able to share my message with people in the community and all throughout the state and just get to, yeah, get to serve the community. I'm so excited for this year.
Who's your parents? Madeline?
Dustin and Jamie Smith, football coach.
Do you know how to throw a football?
Not as good as some of the players, but I can, I can throw it decently.
That wasn't part of your talent on stage?
No, it should have been. I should have done that.
I bet her talent was fantastic, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, you come from a great family.
Yes, they're awesome.
Excited to watch you represent Spanish Fork this next year, so best of luck.
Thank you.
Enjoy it. It goes by in the blink of an eye.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I, the, Miss Spanish Fork from now, a couple of years ago, ran into her mom just over the weekend, and she's off doing something and gonna be back soon, I think, on, on a mission for her church or something. And she said, yes, she's gonna be back. And I'm thinking, she was just Miss Spanish Fork. So, there's my advice that hit me in the face over the weekend, is just what Councilwoman Beck said. Golly, you think that you got a long thing ahead of you, but it's gonna be over quick. And so, we're so excited to, to partner with you at all the events and have you represent our, our city far and wide and, and your, your attendance as well. So, thank you. We've heard nothing but good things from, from Councilman Took, and he knows these things.
It's my wheelhouse.
Thank you so much.
We're excited to serve with you this year. We'll be seeing you around, and good luck, and let us know how we can-
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Easter egg hunt on Saturday, so.
I know. I'm so excited. All ready to go.
Mom, with Miss Spanish Fork coming to see us, can we get a picture with her up, up front? Is that okay? And you can play pitcher man again.
He's loving this role.
Okay, that added to the highlight of the meeting. It's, it's getting better. Appreciate that, Madeline, and Numis Spanish Fork royalty. Takes us to item four, the public comment section of our agenda. Anybody from the public that would like to come up and address the mayor and council or ask any questions? Doesn't have to be on the agenda tonight, but if you can try to keep it to three minutes, that way we can respect everybody's time, if anybody wants to come up for public comment. Seeing none, we'll go to council comments, and since, we'll start on this end, see if we can give them time to get back, if that's alright. Yeah, if that's alright. Councilman Took.
You bet. Thank you, mayor. Our Chamber of Commerce President, Kathleen Levitt, was unable to make it. Traffic out there on I-15, if you heard about that. It's kind of crazy today. So she shared a couple of things just a couple of minutes ago for me to share with you all, for the city. Just two upcoming things that, that you want to be aware of. So, first off, we have a ribbon cutting for Gordon Ace Hardware this Thursday, April seventeenth, which is in two days at noon. It's under new ownership. That's why they're doing this. Same location as Ace Hardware's always been here in town. But it underwent a huge makeover, and they are running a ton of great sales and promotions on Thursday especially, so another reason to go and, and support and, and, you know, check it out. And then the second item is the Easter egg hunt. We have that this coming Saturday, the nineteenth, at nine o'clock AM sharp. It's, we've all been, it's, it's just a wonderful event. Please come early if you have, you know, you want to go, you know, have little kids, you want to be there, especially if they want to participate. You'll, you'll see where the crowd is. Just follow, follow that group and you'll, you'll find where we're at. Also, bring your own Easter egg baskets. Bring a bucket or bag. It doesn't, doesn't really matter. And as far as Chamber of Commerce goes, that is, that is the announcements from them. Lots of good happening there. Just one or two more things for me, mayor, just, first off, I had the opportunity to fill in for Councilwoman Beck. I lucked out and got to participate in something I haven't yet done in Spanish Fork. And that is the Fiesta Days Rodeo Queen Pageant. And, oh, guys, the picture's up. Great, good job. So I've got some, some photos to show here, and kind of last minute sent them over. But, yeah, gives you kind of an idea here of, of the day. I was able to spend a Saturday, a week or two ago, I forget exactly, but the, the queen this year actually is from Spanish Forks. Often, she's not right there in the middle. And I just had the most lovely time with, you know, with this group of individuals that put this event orchestrated so well together. Chris Ivey and his wife, they're the directors, and they do an amazing job. This, this, I was a part of the private interview portion, and then I was able to be the live interviewer on stage and, and then able to participate in the, in the crowning of the Miss Fiesta Days Rodeo Queen. And just really added a new element of appreciation and just specialness to me of, of Fiesta Days. And to see something like this so early on in the year, taking shape that will be a big part of Fiesta Days, which is so important to us and our city and our, our tradition and our pride and progress. So, anyway, I just, working with the writing club was fun. Meeting the royalty, working with them. We'll see them around town, especially during Fiesta Days. And so, just, yeah, wanted to share that I was able to have that experience and, and loved it. Last thing I'd like to, to share this evening is just two things in regards to Parks and Recreation. First off, I wanted to echo congratulations to Dell Robinson, our director. He's, I've been fortunate to work with him for years and really cherish that relationship. He does an amazing job. Many decades in the making of him do, you know, doing things really well and, and for Spanish Fork City. And so to see him recognized as he has been, it makes sense, and, and hard work pays off. So I just, I, I love that. Also, we had our, our Parks and Recreation Committee meeting just this last Monday night. We talked about all sorts of important things, great things happening. We have an amazing committee, a couple, we'll actually have a, a couple reinstatements this evening as well, a little later on. But we talked about rodeo tickets, the, the new rec center, just some other, other focuses, overall growth and projects going on, just so many important things that fall under that umbrella of Parks and Recreation. And so, yeah, I love participating in that part of my assignment. So, that is all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Took, appreciate that. Good work. Councilman Cardon?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The only thing I have tonight is, as we had two of our youth city council members do the thought and prayer this morning, or this, start of this meeting, not this morning. It feels like it was out already. But, applications are currently open for the 2025, 2026 year for our youth city council. There is a lot that they can do. Helps with resumes for colleges, but also there's some leadership opportunities there and a lot of service, especially as we get into Fiesta Days. They'll be helping with the Easter egg hunt. They help with Harass Me and Hurrah. I think this past week, they helped at a senior center here in, or a skilled nursing facility here in the area for a prom that they did at their location, so they were able to go and do that. They just are doing a lot of good things and a lot of good kids coming together from four different high schools. Actually, I think we have five different high schools, because there may be a different city that a couple of kids came from this last year. If they're going into ninth grade or gonna be a senior, so that's the age range that we're looking for. Applications are due by May fourth, or twenty-fourth. You can go to the, just to the Spanish Fork website to sign up for that. And then if you want to be an officer, those applications close a little bit earlier on the seventeenth. Just wanted to put that out there for the masses, because I think it's such a good program and it's such a good opportunity for our kids to do something together and, and really to give back to the community. So, that's all I got, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Cardon, Councilman Euler?
Thank you, mayor. Just two quick things. Last week, Nick Porter, who is our Recreation Center Manager, took our senior center board members through a tour of the, of the rec center, which is currently under construction. Just wanted to give some, some feedback on how that went. Everybody that had the opportunity to go and see where their new senior center is gonna be and the size and the location, just absolutely loved it. Kept asking how soon until we can be in here. They're very excited. They're looking forward to, to making that change in the fall. Construction's moving along. It looks great. So, I'm excited as well. The other thing, yesterday, last night, we had a meeting with our RAP tax committee. And I just wanted to thank those individuals that serve on that committee. They're just volunteers within our community who get together and, and review the applications that get submitted by, by groups that are requesting funds or requesting a grant that comes from our RAP tax that we pay as, as citizens that live here. We had, I believe, fifteen applicants, which is probably more than we've ever had. And we also, the funding that was requested was higher than it's ever been. A lot of people asking for funds, which is great. That's the purpose of, of the RAP taxes, to try and help, help these organizations. But the difficult thing was they were only able to fund about half of the dollar amount that was requested. And so they had a lot of big decisions that they had to analyze and, and work through. But they did a fantastic job as a committee, reviewing each of those applicants and coming up with, with solutions and, and dollar amounts. So just want to thank each of them that spent time last night away from their families to, to go through that process and be a part of that committee. That's all I had, mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Euler. Thank you for that. Good work. Councilwoman Beck?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say, I think last week it was, that I was able to go out and do some Mills on Will's deliveries for lunch from eleven to twelve. and do some Mills on Will's deliveries for lunch from 11 to 12. I think we went to about 10 homes and visit with the seniors, usually just very briefly, but besides just getting a mill brought in, it's just that point of contact. Oftentimes, these are the only people they see during the day, it's a good touch point to make sure that they're doing well. And to just let Spanish Fork know that we are in need in our community of one more volunteer during the week. And so if it's something that you think you can do one hour a week to reach out to the Mills on Will's online, you can find their website. These men and women are just so happy to see a smiling face come by and greet them and wish them a happy day. So, and the next thing is this morning, Mayor and I met with General, he's retired General Mike Minihan. He's the president and new CEO of the Candy Bomber Foundation and with him is Jim Stewart, also retired Army pilot, I believe. And he is this executive director, COO, of the Candy Bomber Foundation. And Minihan flew in from Florida, he visited with the governor yesterday, Congressman Owens today, Mayor and I, and they are just really trying to spread the word, the good things that they're doing, the needs, the funds that they're looking for to create a museum here in our Spanish Fork Airport for just the development of future STEM kids, really, right? It was just a great meeting, always good to see the mayor in action and share his wisdom with them. And I think, I think they're going to be doing some really big and good things shortly, so stay tuned for that. And we, as a council and staff, want to invite the public out to our Station 61 Open House. That will be next Tuesday, April 21st, I believe, I'm guessing, 2nd? Whatever next Tuesday is. And that will be at our Main Street Fire Station from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and hot dogs for everybody. And the reason we are doing this open house is just to invite the public to walk through this fire station and kinda see some restraints the crews are facing, some things that we need to make decisions on. We would love input and feedback and just have you be aware of some of the needs that we're facing at this time with that fire station. So you're invited again next Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00. I think that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you to the U City Council, Claire and McKinley for coming and sharing some thoughts and a prayer with us tonight, appreciate that. Just one last thing, UDOT published their Center Street environmental document, I think last week. Basically made the decision on what type of interchange is going out on Center Street and that the project is getting moved forward now, going into design. They don't have any money for design or right of way, so there's gonna be a gap in probably any sort of outreach or anything like that, but they have made a decision, they decided to move forward with what we saw in our city council meeting a few months ago. So if you want to take a look at that document, go ahead on their website, just search Center Street Spanish Fork and it'll be one of the first things that pops up. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you for that, important stuff. Okay, just two things really quick before we get to staff reports. In case, again, you live under a rock, there was some news shared last week that the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints has announced that a temple will be built in Spanish Fork. Some great news releases on that. I think fitting to what was already shared today here of the quality of life, I just wanted to read a paragraph or two of our news release that basically goes out to the media and then media decides what they wanna put in their articles. And so you would've seen a couple of those stories, but I think it's fitting for what we've already talked about again tonight. Couple of these paragraphs. "The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints announced plans to construct a temple in Spanish Fork. This marks a significant and historic moment for many in the community. Spanish Fork is known for its strong sense of belonging, family values, and vibrant and cultural and religious traditions. While this announcement will carry special meaning for members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, it also reflects the city's continued growth and regional importance. Spanish Fork City remains committed to being a place where people of all backgrounds feel at home. From historic roots to modern milestones, the community grows, continues to grow in ways that reflect shared values of unity, progress, and respect." So maybe an important paragraph, the last part of it, "Information about the temple's design, location, and construction timeline will be shared by church leaders. Spanish Fork City will coordinate with project representatives to ensure a smooth and well communicated process." So more to come on that and it will probably come from the church leaders and we'll coordinate and correspond and share what we can when we can from here. So we're grateful for that announcement, for how much it means to many people in our community. Next thing, I sent Mr. Pierce a picture about, I can't really remember what it was till you brought it up, thanks Cory. But it was sent to me by our electrical department that maybe Cory can talk a little bit more about what's going on here. They're not just on South Main fixing something like they normally are in this picture, but they're far away from home for a few days, taking care of other people in other places, which is a pretty cool story. So Cory, maybe you can tell us who's in that picture and what they're doing.
Yeah, so we have Braden Harris, Travis Reed, Sam Andres, and Brady Shepard. You can tell they're not in Utah even, they're down on the Navajo Nation, just south across into Arizona. And they're part of a program that the American Public Power Association has put on called Light Up the Navajo Nation. So several utilities, several partners through the APPA send employees or personnel as well as some equipment down and they help provide power to those who still in our day live without it. I think yesterday they said they were able to turn on the power for a single mother and her two kids who have lived their lives without power. So this is kind of a fun thing for this group. I know a group went a couple of years ago and just a way to give back for them as individuals, but also Spanish Fork power to reach out and help provide that service. So, great opportunities.
Well, I think about the time commitment they're giving, but the skills that they learn too. I always joke with a couple of these guys when the power flickers out in our houses, hey, go plug it back in and turn it on, let's go. And it's more detailed than that, Jesse, I promise. A little more complicated, a little more dangerous. And so it's awesome that the city supports it, that the APPA supports it, but that these individuals have the skills to be able to make something like that happen. And so should be commended and thank you Cory for allowing, you know, them to participate in that. And I think it's a neat thing that our city can continue to engage in through APPA. So, cool stuff, cool stories. Okay, anything else, council, before we move to staff reports? Okay, I think Mr. Pierce is gonna take us away for staff reports as well.
I'll just introduce a couple of items. First, we'll invite Adam Pullingup. If you don't know Adam, he is the Assistant Division Manager for Fleet and Garbage. And he's here to talk to us a little bit about spring cleanup. So let me pull up his...
Okay, so we're having the spring and fall cleanup again this year. Last year, the goal was to keep the city clean, beautiful and healthy for the residents and we've had a ton of support for the program, not only from the council, but also from the residents. We've had a lot of great positive feedback from everyone. And this year, last year, we also moved to the vouchers, voucher program, instead of having dumpsters around the city, which has helped with non-resident use, keeping the parks clean, safety at night, and then reducing noise complaints. And last year, we had 2,000 users go down to the transfer station. Yeah. So then this year, the dates are the 3rd to the 30th of May. We moved it out a week because that was one of the biggest complaints from last year is that it was just too short, that people wanted to go down but forgot about it or, yeah, didn't have time. So both spring and fall are going for a full four weeks. And you can see the fall dates up there are October 4th through the 1st. And the, it's down at the Dry Creek Transfer Station, so the new transfer station that was built last year, at the north end of town. So this is how to get a voucher. We go to the Spanish Fork main page, click on Public Works, then we go to Garbage Services and Recycling, then down to the Spring and Fall Cleanup. There, you can click on a form and you just have to put in your accountant, your utility account number and the last name on the account. And then there's a limit of three per account and the transfer station wants us to print out the paper. You can't use your phone or use a barcode. And then an acceptable list of items can be found on the transfer station website. And this is what the voucher looks like. And, yeah.
Any questions for Adam?
Yep.
It's a pretty good summary.
That's good.
All right. So you got the month of May to clean it up, right?
Yep.
Use your vouchers to get down to the transfer station. Cool. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mayor, we'll invite Mr. Chris Thompson. He just can't get enough of Spanish Fork City Council.
Please.
So, yes, he's here and he'll introduce some others to help. Talk about the public outreach we had on the Main Street, kind of a summary there.
Thanks Cory. It's really good to be back.
Good to have you.
Didn't realize how much I missed everyone. It's really fun seeing everybody. So, once in a while Cory's office will get a complaint about Main Street. Traffic is pretty dense on Main Street a lot of times and I believe over half of the most dangerous intersections, the top 10 most dangerous intersections are on Main Street. And so there's a lot of safety concerns, a lot of congestion, and just a general feel that Main Street, we want Main Street to be more vibrant and beautiful and a good place to do business and attract business. And so a couple of grants were obtained to do that work, to make some improvements on Main Street and try to solve a lot of these issues. And some studies were done and as part of those studies, a big outreach effort was made to reach out to the public, particularly the businesses on Main Street and the citizens and to get input on that. This isn't, the design hasn't been made, but the design will be made based upon this data that we collected from the residents and the businesses. Anyway, Leah Hadamio is here from, she has a lot of experience with public engagement. She's taught university classes on it, I think Tara attended one. And she has about 20 years of experience doing these type of outreaches to the community. She's done over 100 of these type of events and has really fine tuned her abilities to get input from the public, to synthesize it and get that out. And so I'm excited to introduce her and have her give a little presentation on what we found out.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, council members, for having me. Hopefully, this will work. I always get nervous. Here we go. All right. Okay, great. So, I'm, sorry, there we go. We had a couple of events on February 19th to talk both with business owners and with the general public, both here in your beautiful library, right across the hall in the Heritage Room, and heard from about 100 folks between the two events, which was great. We're pleased to hear from people. And I'm gonna kind of give you a quick overview of what we talked about and then what we heard from each of the different events and kind of a summary that the team is gonna consider as they move forward. So if you were able to come to the event, there were many, many slides and lots of concept information, but the kind of key points that we wanted to bring up to the public is that there are a lot of crashes on Main Street, like Chris said. It's five of the top 10 most dangerous intersections in Spanish Fork are on Main Street. And there are, you know, 362 crashes in the last five-year period that are reported by police, which is a lot of crashes. So there's also a lot of congestion and we know from the 2018 Main Street plan that people would like it to be greener and more inviting and support the businesses. So that's a lot of competing interests. Our goal is really to try to think about how we might address those through the concept design and also leveraging the funding that UDOT provided for safety improvements. So these were some renderings that we showed to the public at that meeting. Again, there were lots more detailed in boards and slides about bus stops and landscaping and where medians would be, where they wouldn't be, what turn lanes looked like, all of the design, all the way through the entire corridor, but this is just kind of a refresher. So if you weren't able to attend those, this information is on the website, you can see all the boards there. So folks who are watching at home, if you couldn't come, you can go take a look at those and I have the link at the end of the presentation. So as we talked through kind of what we were thinking about and how it might help address congestion, crashes, and beautification of downtown, we wanted to really run that by business owners first. So the first meeting we had was at 8:30 in the morning, I think, 8:00 or 8:30 in the morning. We had about 40 business owners sign in. There might've been more, but I can only go by the sign-ins. So we set up this workshop, you can see in the top right there, Chris is giving them kind of an overview of the project. Then we asked folks to sit with their neighbors at a table. You can see there was some sitting and some standing. People are, you know, really motivated to talk about what's happening in their community and immediately adjacent to their businesses. So we had some strong opinions about the design and both in favor of parts of it and opposed to parts of it. The primary concern, excuse me, for the north end, which is sort of the first phase, the phase that is already funded, was parking and adding more crosswalks. Right now, there's a stretch of Main Street from 8th North to 4th North that doesn't have any crosswalks east and west. And the design sort of mimicked that, we hadn't added more crosswalks. And we heard from folks, if you're gonna make downtown walkable, you need to be able to make crossings safely. So that was a really key point from that northern section. The middle section, 4th North to Center Street, really was adamant that parking, access, and visibility are key for them. So while the concept designs show parking, the role plots did not show parking. We wanted to kind of learn about parking needs. And so not only were the sort of historic downtown area, 4th North to Center Street, asking for on-street parking, they were also asking for more parking on side streets, behind businesses, really making it easy to get to those businesses from wherever people are coming from in Spanish Fork. Congestion and speeding was a topic across all of the discussions at all the tables and all the locations. And there was some disagreement around what types of accidents are occurring on Main Street, whether they're speed-related, turn-related, distracted driving-related. And, you know, if you're a business owner on Main Street, you see what's happening in front of your location. If you're a driver on Main Street, you're gonna see things maybe from a different lens. And so one of the things that I'll talk about at the end, but I'll mention now, was in this meeting with businesses, we did commit to go back and really dig into that crash data and identify the types of crashes that are happening and make sure that the concept design aligns with ways to help improve safety, right? And we need to report that back to the public so we can show them, in fact, that these are the types of crashes that are happening and these are the types of interventions that could make them, reduce them. So the other kind of interesting conflict there was that some people felt like traffic signals would be a better safety improvement than medians. was that some people felt like traffic signals would be a better safety improvement than medians. And so, again, I think there's some discussion around the types of crashes, the kind, where people are going, the routing. Um, this is more Chris and Shane's wheelhouse than mine on the technical end, but there's some work that needs to be done about the kinds of traffic that we have and which are the right interventions. Because if you have speeding and congestion, there's, you know, different schools of thought around whether traffic, more signals are the right intervention, right? So, the team committed to go back, uh, and look at that as well. Of course, construction and duration and impacts is always an important conversation with business owners. I think most folks felt okay because this money is not allocated until 2028, but that will be an important consideration when the project does go to construction, that, um, the project team would want to engage those businesses early, talk with them about what to expect, and be sure to provide really clear, um, schedule and impact information to them. So then later in the evening, we had the public open house. We had, again, a lot of boards for people, rather than giving a formal presentation, the same information but on boards, so people could wander around, take a look at them and talk with our project team members. Parking, again, was still a, a important issue. Folks in Spanish Fork know that they want to support those businesses, and so that was really important to them. Again, a similar disagreement about the types of crashes that are happening between speeding, running red lights. I don't know, some, I don't know if it was the same person, or if multiple people are seeing lots of red light running, because that comment came up on the plot in a number of locations, which is sometimes one person. It kind of looks like it might have been, just based on the handwriting. I can't make that judgment, I'm just reporting to you. But there were a few comments about people running red lights. Maybe the most frequent comment we had was about getting designated turn arrows on the signals off, onto and off of Main Street, which is something that would be done when widening and adjustments happen, right, as part of that construction. We had about 60 folks sign into that meeting. There was more support from medians. And I think, again, that discrepancy around the types of crashes and, and what, what would help. People were also really concerned about maintenance of any of the landscaping improvements. So, um, as is pretty common with street trees, we put trees in and then maybe a utility comes and that tree dies because somebody had to get into the sidewalk, or we put trees in and then something happens and we have to change it. And so, there was just not surprising, I think, a request from the public that the public money that's invested in beautification be maintained, and that the, the idea of the trees and landscaping, um, be something that the city is committed to. I think there was some discussion around other cities having put in and taken out landscaping over the years. So, um, again, that's great. Your public is making sure that their, their tax dollars are being put to good use and in a responsible way, which I think is always great to hear. Again, a lot of people were asking for more crossings. Um, and then there was that discussion around medians and access, and that's pretty common. I don't think anybody really likes medians. It means a change in your driving pattern. It means a change. You have to think about where you're going, which we're not frankly, super used to when we're driving around our own hometown, right? I've been driving the same way to my local grocery as I always have. And so, if I have to go around the block or I have to think about it a little bit, we, we get met with some tension. So, again, I think it's really important to talk about the types of crashes and the types of engineering intervention that make the most sense, um, for, to be effective. So, overall, these were the topics. Um, parking, you can see, was the highest. Pedestrian safety and crosswalks, again, tied with the signals and left turns. And then, um, coming in fourth is road design suggestions, and those were kind of the random one-offs. So, there were 14 random one-offs, but they were not, um, sort of categorical. And I'm happy to share them with you, um, at a later date, if you're interested. But they were everything from like, there's a deep gutter at this one location that we need to look at, to...
Shane would love the details on that.
I bet he would. He, he probably could probably already surmise them, is my guess. So, again, not unusual there. So, the key takeaways were...
Can you go back one?
Oh, sure.
Sorry. Um, the pedestrian safety and crosswalks. Were those comments, this is gonna make it worse, or?
No. We need more, we need more east-west crosswalks. And make them visible, right? Make them, people were asking for flags or the flashing signs on the side or the overhead lights. We had some conversations about the difference between... I'm gonna get the acronym wrong. Yeah, I always say it the wrong way. Um, RFBs and HOCS and some of the technical things. Lots of opinions about those as well. And so, the team is going back to look at adding at least one crossing, in that 8th to 4th North section. And also, how do we do that safely in a way that keeps, um, traffic flowing? Because congestion is the other major concern, right? So, lots of competing interests that we're trying to engineer for. Okay. So, the key takeaways are to keep parking on Main Street, to add that designated left turn arrow at the existing traffic signals, add more east-west crosswalks, keep traffic moving. There were quite a few comments about improving the access from northbound Main Street to I-15. Just the way the lanes are configured, there's lots of weaving. People, many, many people, um, were happy to see, you know, shields on the paint, painted shields on the roadway, which was not actually planned. It was part of the design to sort of indicate to people where it's going, so that may advance. We'll have to talk with Cory. People were asking for, you know, extension of that turn lane. There are lots of things around that interface. And then, um, committing to come back and report back more on the crash types and how those crash types are mitigated by the different engineering strategies. So, again, this is the potential project schedule. Nothing, uh, would, is planned for construction until 2028, which means that design could begin maybe next year with advertisement for a contractor in late 2027. So, we're not in a huge rush. Um, there's time to consider these things, and that's what the team will do. And I'll just drop that slide there again. If you weren't able to see, come to the events, though, all of that information is there at u.input.utah.gov/spanishforkmain.
Perfect.
Any questions?
Thank you. I've got, I've got a question for you.
Got it.
Yes, it'll be in the recording.
I've got just a quick question. So, some of the feedback that I've received, and Shane, you can help jump in on this answer as well. Some of the feedback I've received from some of the business owners and residents is the timing around this project and the timing around the Center Street project. And their thoughts are that if we're gonna be shutting, not shutting down Main Street, but causing some delays and some, some headaches around Main Street with this project, knowing that in the future, the Center Street project will also go underway, go underway and possibly alleviate some traffic on Main Street. Do we try and coordinate to have these take place close to the same time? Uh, I know this one would be a lot sooner probably than the Center Street one, but what are, what are your thoughts around that?
I think if you, if we knew the funding opportunity for Center Street, then we should have that conversation, because it's, it's post 2030. So, if, if we knew that it was 2031...
Early 2030.
Then maybe we need to talk about combining the two or having one before the other one. But because that's so far off, it's really difficult. I mean, we still have two or three years before we get to this one. But if we find out that it's, you know, Center Street's gonna come in 2030, then maybe we should have that conversation.
And there's...
To continue this, progressing this.
There's grant money around this one as well. Is there timetable that, that, that needs to be used? That kind of sets a time limit as well?
Yeah, 2028 is, is probably the latest that we could go to, to use this grant money to do this project. But one of the reasons why it is in 2028 is because some of these other alternate north-south corridor projects will be done by then. So, the residents of Spanish Fork will have some good options other than Main Street to get to maybe the Costco area or I-15, uh, when, when the construction's going on. So, and then, I agree with Shane, it's just... The Center Street project is, is kind of up in there when the funding will come on that. And so, uh, we, we don't really know. But when that comes, it'd be a great conversation.
Just, Chris, the point is that both 30 East and West will be done fully implemented. Traffic will move to those corridors potentially. During construction, it'll definitely move to those corridors. So, there are options, if in fact this does go by 2028.
For residents. Yeah, I will say that I live on the west side of Main Street, and with the 3rd West corridor being improved the way it has, I never take Main Street anymore when I need to get to Costco or Macy's. I take 3rd West, cross Main Street. Chris taught me that. And then turn on 3rd or 4th, 4th East. So, it's much improved from what, from what it used to be.
Yeah, the moment 4th North and 3rd East gets done, I'll be taking 3rd East every time as well. Crossing 4th is no fun, except for the Roundabout.
Yeah.
It'll be great having a, a corridor on either side of Main Street when this happens. And I think this will probably train people to use those corridors, which, which would be a real positive. Over half of the traffic on Main Street doesn't start in Spanish Fork and doesn't end in Spanish Fork. And so, that's kind of hard on, on the residents of Spanish Fork. But these corridors are really for the residents of Spanish Fork to get around, so it should be good.
Yeah. Cory, I don't know if you want to give an update, but I think I heard just within the last day or two that, uh, 4th North and 3rd East project is gonna start within the next month?
It, yeah, the project's been out to bed and we will construct it this summer. And, and if you've driven Center Street, you see them starting to stand. Uh, the signal poles up, and then you'll have a great corridor from really Canyon Road, 3rd South, up through 1,000 North, well, 9th, 9th North. I think the other thing worth mentioning back on the Main Street, the funds we have currently are for safety. And especially, like Shane mentioned, not knowing when Center Street comes. While we might enhance traffic, traffic flow down Main with different things, really the focus is how can we decrease accidents? And, and that's something that, you know, I, I think we don't want to put off. If we can make it safer, now's the time to do that. The money's available. And so, I, I would think that should be our priority. And maybe second priority with that is if we can enhance the flow and, and make things better.
Great point.
Yeah.
Parking-wise, number one concern.
Yeah.
What, I guess when I looked, we looked at the plans before, before the public meetings, I didn't notice there was a very large reduction in parking.
There wasn't. I think the concept design showed some bulbouts. But the role plots just showed a, a shoulder. And so, it wasn't clearly delineated as parking, and so people really wanted to express how important parking was.
Okay, it was assumed that it was taken away.
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay. Alright, that's why.
And that's... No, we didn't have a lot of people arguing for bike lanes, right? The, the, the vast majority of the use of that space was for parking.
Okay. So, on the ends, were the bulbouts, were there one or two potentially parking spaces that we lost? But other than that, it was, by and large, okay.
And even when we talked through that with the business, businesses in the workshop, they had asked for additional parking on side streets. There was some suggestion around just striping in, what's the street that you have that on already? Like 100 North and 700 North? So, just as you come off Main Street, just striping in some parking stalls, just to clearly delineate. And in that case, there were some deep gutters and things that maybe the project would address. So, there was some discussion around that, and then, um...
I think we may have lost a few stalls, just in most of the roads, we're trying to put a right turn pocket, where only certain roads have that today. And that's part of the problem. When you want to turn right and no turn pocket, you're disrupting traffic. You have nowhere to peel off if someone's parking there. And so, we might lose a few at the corners. That's from a safety standpoint and even a site triangle, a good thing. And so, I think the idea of exploring on the side streets for that first block, if there's opportunity to make some on-street parking that is pretty easily accessible, certainly in that Center Street to 4th North area, I think those are things we, we need to look at and the project could probably address.
I appreciate that delineation, because as, as the person that's on Main Street all day with business is, is that, that from 4th North to Center is marked, markedly different than, than 4th North to 1,000 North as far as even the businesses and, and need for parking on there. There's, there's homes, uh, on, from 4th North on that people aren't parking in front of. But businesses in that Commerce District, heavily, heavily used. So, I appreciate you listening to that area. And I know we were loud sometimes, and we were...
That's why we have a business workshop. I mean, that's the intent, right, is to get that input. You know what it looks like in front of your business, and you know what your traffic looks like. And we don't, I mean, the engineers don't, I don't, right? So, I think that's really important. And, uh, the key takeaway for me was that even in your most historic downtown area, you have a real difference in the types of businesses you have. You have some businesses where people want to come and spend a lot of time, and you have some businesses where people want to pull up, run in and take off again. And, and so, trying to meet those kinds of needs with parking and access and visibility are, that's a, that's a big mix, so.
If you touch on what Councilman Euler aptly mentioned, maybe the other ring of it besides the safety is the discussions I've had with fellow business owners on Main is the aging infrastructure in, inside Main Street, underneath Main Street. So, now you get into things that, when you're gonna do construction and change roads and tear up roads, it's, it is also because there's pipes underneath there that
Need to change.
That have to change, they haven't changed. They're at their end of their useful life. So, if you're gonna get the money now, you better, you better get them done.
Absolutely.
We don't want a parked car to fall into a sinkhole because a pipe broke, right?
We've seen that before. A car fell on it, but we did have a sinkhole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council on this? I think you've, uh, the public can, can see this. I think it's smart to, to be close to this, scan the QR codes when they come up and, and just be aware of the, the next steps moving forward and, and reach out to us, so we can reach out to the, the right people as well and get questions answered if we don't have the answers. So, appreciate your engagement and your good work. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Lars, thank you. You want to say anything?
No.
The pretty face back there.
Yep.
Okay, uh, that does it for staff reports, I believe, Cory. You trying to set a record for the longest staff report since Seth's not here, or what?
No, maybe I did. Not intentionally.
Oh, that's alright. I did neglect to mention we're missing Seth Perrins and Tyler Jacobson and Jack tonight. They're at a conference for the city. So, uh, we wish some safe travels as they're, they'll be here next time. Takes us to item seven on the agenda, the consent items, just A, the minutes from the last city council meeting. If there's any questions or comments about that, feel free to share them. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Second by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to item eight, our only public hearing for tonight, which is the Whispering Pines Development Agreement. Mr. Vaughn Pikel, I believe, to talk to us about this one.
Mayor and council, as you know, you approved a zone change and a preliminary plat for the Whispering Pines project back in March, subject to finalizing a development agreement for the project. So, this agreement tonight memorializes the council's action of that night. I wanted to first thank the developer and the developers' council for their role in approaching the, the negotiation of the development agreement in a thoughtful, fair and open-minded way. And also, I wanted to thank our staff, Dave Anderson, Jared Johnson and Seth Perrins, just for being present and helping us get the development agreement negotiated and finalized. I just want to make a few points about the agreement, and it should be pretty straightforward. You've seen the project before. First of all, it, it was a legislative process. That's why we're having a public hearing tonight. Had a notice and a public hearing at the Planning Commission as well. So, we're adopting this like it's an ordinance. It's a legislative act. So, that means that if there's any conflict between our ordinances and our standards and what's approved in the development agreement, um, this, the agreement will control. That's the intent of the Legislative Development Agreement. Just some highlights. Roads was a big topic in this development and in the agreement itself. That's a good image there. Uh, one thing is that we limited the max... One thing is that we limited the maximum number of units that can be occupied to fifty until there's an emergency access connection at Gomex Road. Maybe that's a better one because you can see the alignment of Highway Six and, and Gomex Road off of that. And you can see where that connection will happen on the east side of the project. Or I guess that's more south, isn't it? North is to the left. To also concerning roads, there's the right-of-way dedication. They're going to donate to the city for the Finger Hut Road widening and connection all the way to the Gomex Road uh, connection point. They'll do that right with Phase One. So we'll have that right-of-way secured um, from, right from the beginning. There's the new bridge over the railroad that you can see right at the top of the map there. It's just the gray, or there's the white diagram just off, off this, off the map there. And that will cross the railroad and connect to US Six at Highway eighty-nine as well. So you'll have that major intersection at that point. There'd be a significant widening of Finger Hut Road. There'd be like a multi-lane boulevard with the divider down the middle. It gets in the bottom left corner in the blue. And it will go to a roundabout improvement. And that with that, there will be a signal on, on Powerhouse Road of, of, of Finger Hut Road. So it would be a high-T intersection and a signalization. High-T is important because it, it makes it a safer intersection, allows a better flow as well for traffic through that. So you're going to have this mix of, of vehicle traffic, the background traffic that's on Powerhouse Road today. But then you'll also have the new residence traffic from the, the residences that are there or proposed there with the, the truck traffic that visits the distribution center. There will be regional trail through and connecting to the trails outside of the project. So that's a benefit. And they're going to put a pressurized irrigation main in, in Powerhouse Road. And so those, those things are, are features of the development agreement. There's also, talks about the reimbursement process for the upsizing of the utilities throughout the project. And that's a typical thing we always address in, in development agreements. They'll follow our city's established process for that. And then I think finally what the developer hopes to get is the vested rights language in there with the identification of the maximum number of units um, and the types of units, the townhomes, the condos and the single-family homes. That's really most of what the development agreement is about. There's a lot of other boilerplate language that's important to, to include, but maybe not so interesting to discuss.
Can I confirm one thing? So there's five hundred and seventy-nine units and only after fifty units have been built, they need to have the Gomex Road?
Yes. They have to have that emergency access
Okay.
connection provided.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions, council?
And the Gomex Road will not be used.
No, it's a
It's just in case.
Emergency only, I think with a gate for the emergency responders to get through.
And the bridge, at one time I thought it was car, then I thought, oh no, it's just for pedestrians. So I just asked Shane and it's for both.
Yes, it's to get the, the road and the, and the trail traffic across the railroad. And then the road obviously will connect to Highway Six and then the trail will cross
Gotcha.
probably in a different location at a safer point.
Questions for Vaughn before we go to public hearing? Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you.
Appreciate that detail. I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing for item A.
I move that we go into public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Second by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item A. Anybody from the public uh, that would like to come up and speak to this? Uh, I have neglected to invite the applicant. If the applicant, we, we're not going to keep you to the three-minute timeline, Mr. Applicant, but you could come up and speak to it. Maybe that would initiate some public comment, but we'll just include you in the public.
Just so you know, there is no comment right now. So whatever you say that invites more comments on you.
So I just said.
Please tell Tara your name.
Okay, uh, my name is Mr. Applicant, says the mayor, so I apologize. My name is Paxton Geiman. I'm uh, in-house general counsel for Edge Homes. And uh, I just wanted to echo Vaughn's comments of appreciation for being able to negotiate a development agreement in good faith. I think both sides had to make a few compromises, but I do want to pay tribute to your staff and your city attorney for being very, very good at what they do and having the foresight to see what this project needed to end up looking like so that it would work for the city and for us. It's a unique project and I know you're aware of it. It's got a long history. Let me just say that, you know, we sort of pulled a, a rabbit out of a hat by getting the legislature to appropriate so much funding for this bridge. It's manna from heaven in many ways. And um, so much work went into that behind the scenes from lobbyists, from city staff, from ourselves, from consultants. And that's how the process works. And, and the legislature saw it fit to appropriate a lot of money uh, for this bridge. And I think it makes everything much more feasible, safer, much better traffic circulation. Uh, we like this project. We're very excited to, to build this community in your city. We have other properties we're looking at in your city and, and uh, we just think Spanish Fork is a great place. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the development agreement, our timing, the sequencing, anything about this project that you might have questions about.
Thank you, Mr. Geiman. We'll, we'll, we'll probably call you up with
Okay.
more questions if that's all right. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
Still moved.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Carden. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here. Any questions for staff or Mr. Geiman about this development?
I just needed to disclose again, the Edge Homes is my client at my employment. So I did that last time, but I probably, if I'm going to vote, better say, say that again.
Thank you. Anything else, council? You've, we've seen this. We saw a lot of it uh, when we, when we approached a zone change that we went through methodically. It doesn't look like, like Vaughn had went over. It doesn't look like anything too material has changed, except I guess I, I wasn't aware, as you were speaking Vaughn, to just reiterate the, I didn't grasp before that there will be a light there at uh, at uh, connecting to Powerhouse Road and uh, can't remember the name, the Finger Hut Road.
The plan is to do the high-T intersection and the signal in with Phase One of the project.
Your mic.
Sorry, I'm just not close enough. It is on.
I was supposed to give him a look.
I don't know if you can hear it.
Okay, so in, so lit intersection there at, at Powerhouse Road?
Right.
Okay. Anything else, council?
No, debated, talked about.
Yep.
Discussed for a very long time.
Been drawn
Yep.
uh, o- o- over, over everything and I think
Good one.
well discussed. And uh, I, I do, I, I'll just publicly say appreciate the applicant in that process of, of working and taking input and adjusting and working to get to a point that it looks like will be a a great addition to, to Spanish Fork and complement uh, what we do in other parts of the city. So appreciate that. If there's no other discussion than that, I'd entertain a motion for item A.
I move to approve the Whispering Pines Development Agreement based on the findings contained in the agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Perfect. Item A is approved. Takes us out of that
Good night.
section. Thank you, Mr. Geiman. Appreciate it. Takes us to A, B, C, and D of new business. Uh, item A is a resolution approving the inter, inter-local agreement, the ILA, for the twenty twenty-five municipal elections in Utah County. It's Tara's favorite thing
That's right.
is elections, I think.
Thank you. Yes, before you today, you have um, the inter-local agreement between Utah County and Spanish Fork um, to help us with our elections. So it's a local election. So um, as the election officer, I do certain things, but we have um, have this inter-local agreement with the county so that we don't have to incur some of those expenses of the machinery that it costs and those types of things. And so what they've done is they have given us a capped price that it won't be any greater than that price um, so that they can feel like they're going to cover their costs. Um, they've done that with every city in Utah County. It's all the same for every single city. And they base that off active voters. We have asked the state if we can, in the future, do it off actual voters that turn out. They do have to send out ballots anyway, but a lot of those voters don't send them back in, so that would be less cost. So we have asked the state for that, but for now, that's how it is. Um, just to kind of give you some perspective, the Agilis sorting machine, they have one down at the county. Um, they looked at buying a new one for twenty twenty-five and it came out at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for one election machine. So obviously it does save us a lot of money to have the county help us in this area. And then the city will do a lot of the noticing, the declarations, the final uh, results and that type of thing. But this just makes it so that we don't have to acquire all that equipment. In twenty twenty-three, it was two twenty-five, the cap was two twenty-five a voter. Um, it ended up being two twenty-three or two twenty-two. Um, and so they're hoping that it will be less than the two seventy-five that we're seeing here. But um, if you would like to know the particulars of why they've come to that cost, they've shown us how printing costs have gone up by almost twenty percent. And anything that they print, ink, the ballots, the envelopes, the instructions, the stickers, all of that have gone up. And then of course labor has gone up. Um, and because of legislation, there were eighty election bills this year um, that went through the legislator, li- legislature. Luckily, not all of them passed, but there is a quite, a lot of different changes. So just updating instructions, updating uh, questions that need to be asked and that sort of thing just makes it so they can't use ballots they did before. They have to remake them. So the cost does go up. So we're grateful for their help and uh, that they're a good partner, so.
Thanks Tara for your work on that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tara. Any questions for Tara on this? Thank you so much for running professional uh, office. It's important to the residents and important to vote. I'd entertain a motion uh, for item A if there's no questions.
I move to approve the resolution for interlo- local agreement for the twenty twenty-five municipal elections in Utah County.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Item A is approved. Takes us to item B. Uh, the resolution approving inter-local cooperation agreement with Utah County for fire and nine-one-one ambulance service. Mr. Chief Eddie Hales.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is a, a resolution to approve the inter-local agreement between Utah County and Spanish Fork Fire and EMS to provide fire and nine-one-one ambulances services to Utah County. This agreement has taken uh, some time and a lot of people involved, a lot of hands on this document to make it what it is today. Uh, as you know, in the past, we have always received a stipend from Utah County uh, of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars uh, to provide fire services to the county. In twenty twenty-two, we uh, with legislature that was put into place, we were able to start billing uh, those uh, county areas for the time that our ambulances were being utilized in that uh, speci- in those specific unincorporated areas and uh, started collecting on those revenues. Uh, but until twenty twenty-two, we weren't able to collect on any ambulance revenues uh, other than what we collected through insurance companies in the unincorporated Utah County area. What this uh, inter-local now uh, has in place is that uh, that two hundred and ten thousand dollars from what we can find historically hasn't been adjusted for at least two decades. And so uh, that is some old uh, financials that have been in place and just have always consistently been in place uh, for whatever reason that was. Uh, as we started to look at our costs to provide services to our own community, uh, it was a concern of mine that we should be charging those same costs to the county resident as well for providing the same level of service that uh, citizen of Spanish Fork is receiving. And so as we went through this and we worked and made changes with our attorney, their attorneys, uh, their staff, our staff and many others, we were able to come up with a uh, equation that would allow us to charge for the services that we're providing to Utah County. This next fiscal year, this is a five-year agreement with them. Uh, there is an inflator built into the equation to allow us to in, uh, grow with inflation as well for those services that we provide in Utah County. And with that, uh, this will uh, be about five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for this next fiscal year that we will, we will bill to the county. We will no longer bill for the hourly rate that we used to bill uh, for the services in the county like we used to. This was a straight rate uh, that will help us not have to bill consistently every month. That was taking very uh, large amounts of time from our secretary to bill those hours and still not recuperating the, the amount of money that we needed to. And so uh, just for an example, last fiscal year, we collected two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from Utah County for those services. And this next fiscal year with this new agreement that we have with them will be five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Now with that said, we do have a portion of the agreement that uh, other cities have uh, with agreements with nine-one-one ambulance and fire services. Uh, I'll use Vineyard as an example that in their contracts specifically that where we receive insurance money collection from transports of those patients in our ambulance, the county has requested that we give a uh, average amount of those uh, back to them as part of this contract at the end of the fiscal year. So there'll be some adjustments there. Uh, so uh, the five hundred and seventy-two thousand, based on projections, will collect probably about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, depending on how many transports that we actually do end up having out of the county. But that is the projection for this next fiscal year. Uh, we feel like this is uh, in good faith uh, to make this. The county feels as such as well. And they will be putting this forth to their commission uh, tomorrow if it's approved by US Council today. That's all I have tonight. Is there any further questions?
So it's still a pay per incident, right? It's just the cost per instance gone up?
Correct.
It's not like it's a lump sum, they're not paying.
So what we did is uh, very simple math is uh, we took our overall budget to operate and we broke down how many calls for service that we have in a year. And then we took their calls for service and we broke that down to the average cost to offset the operational budget of our, our fire and EMS department.
You get a call, it's almost two thousand bucks, flat rate.
Correct.
Okay. That makes way easier.
And if we don't transport, then we would collect that. If we transport, then we would give them their thousand dollars that we would collect back on the insurance uh, for that insurance money.
Way easier than how many hours you spend on a call.
Way easier. Uh, the, the dynamic was very difficult and it was very stressful on not only our staff, but their staff as well. And uh, this is a first. Uh, we're first at uh, implementing this in the county. Uh, so uh, pri- we're proud of the progress that we've made. I think this was kind of an eye-opener to a lot of our, our county commission as well as um, their staff that this hasn't been touched in so long and that we need to start doing things this way. So we're the first of probably many cities that will start doing this similar contract. But they wanted to solidify Spanish Fork first. So uh, if you're not first, you're last, right? So we like to be first. Uh, another thing too, that I, I just want to credit to this for Utah County and a lot of work that's been put in by the mayor, uh, probably several of you as well as Senator Mikel, and I know some other representatives, is to allow Utah County to get some legislative funding from the recreation and uh, tourism fee uh, that they can collect now to cover the, the tourism that's traveling through uh, the, the Highway Six corridor, uh, that they can help fund uh, some of this uh, for the accidents that occur there of travelers in the state of Utah that, that don't necessarily live here uh, based on that tourism money. So uh, that was a, an allocation of funding that um, is allowing this to happen uh, as well for the county. Uh, so they don't have to increase the, their taxes. This, that'll help offset with that tourism money to help provide those nine-one-one services that are needed in the county, uh, the canyon.
Very good summary. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief on this?
Good work.
Good work. I know you have been working on it and Commissioner Gordon and Chief for well over a year.
Yeah, I think it, it's indicative of uh, it coming to a, a good place and, and like Councilman Marshall had mentioned, getting to the math is important and the space for it too. So good collaboration between different branches of government and uh, appreciate all your, your long efforts and work on it. Got it to a good point.
If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution accepting the inter-local agreement.
I move to approve the resolution accepting the inter-local agreement with Utah County for fire and nine-one-one ambulance services.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cardon. A roll call vote here. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Car, uh, excuse me, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, chief. Thank you, deputy chief. Appreciate you. Takes us to C, a resolution approving the DWQ Municipal Wastewater Planning Program Self-Assessment Survey. That is a mouthful.
Yes.
Mr. Corey Pierce.
So this is an annual survey that, the Division of Water Quality does. It originated early from wastewater utilities getting out of compliance or having troubles and, and boy, the, the council won't give me the money or they don't understand or different things like that. So the Division of Water Quality came up with this survey that helps those utilities think about the health of their system and communicate that to the city council. So that's what this is. Maybe a few of the highlights as I scrolled through that survey. We've got, and I'm not sure this is all in there, but we've got about a hundred and eighty-four miles of sewer pipeline under our streets. They range from six inch to forty-eight inch. And so those are maintained in a way through cleaning and video, video inspections to keep things moving. We have four lift stations, four pump stations, two more under construction and they're all in great shape. In fact, three of the four are pretty new within the last few years. And one that will need some upgrades coming up and then the two under construction will be new. I think probably one of the biggest highlights is in twenty-twenty-four, there were zero sanitary sewer overflows, zero backups caused by the main lines. So while some residents may have had a backup in their home that was tied to their lateral or things like that, that's always inconvenient. But the plus for a city is our lines have been in good shape. The crews that go out and clean them have been proactive. You know, you talk about a hundred and eighty-four miles, they clean a quarter of those every year, you know? So every, every four years, each line is cleaned. And so that keeps them busy year-round. And we video each of those lines once every seven years so that we can see defects and, and move forward with that. There's a financial section in there. Essentially that came back that we're charging adequate amounts in our utility rates as well as impact fees to fund the replacement projects as well as new projects coming down for growth. That's typically a two percent of replacement. So if we have a hundred million dollars of, of sewer lines, we should fund every year about two percent of that amount to keep up. That's based on a fifty-year lifespan, basically hit two percent every year to keep up. So we are funding it that. In fact, right now we're well above because of the treatment plant and the funding that has went into that. And we're on the collection system, still focusing on some of the large concrete mains that have got corroded. And so we're focusing on lining those and strengthening those. So we don't have that pothole in Main Street or otherwise or problems there of people falling into sinkholes. And of course, new treatment plant is well underway in the next month. We should be doing full-scale clean water testing with June starting to introduce sewer. So that project's gone very well. They're testing and turning on equipment every day right now. And, and mid-May, they'll be doing a full circle of full-plant testing with pumping clean water around. And last thing, we currently are staffed adequately with the correct certifications of those operators to run our system. So I think all positive, good report there, but it's a good opportunity, I think as well for the, you know, Zach and his team down there to look at, how are we doing? Are we funding things correctly and are we keeping up? So it's really good, good.
Some good questions in there too.
Yeah, yeah. Things that sometimes get missed until you have an emergency, so. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Pierce?
Thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
No, but I would challenge Jesse that I will take a drink of the water end of May. You take it in, end of June.
Oh, oh, oh. It's drinkable. It's only if you're like in, where is it? Did they just approve that? Washington County somewhere?
Something like that.
Working on it. Reuse projects.
You know, full drinking water reuse plants around.
I was told that Disneyland is one.
Yep, I'm not sure of that.
They, so the water conference that we went to.
It was Councilman Euler that told me that.
The Washington County, can't remember his position, but he works for Washington County over their, their water treatment. He gave the seminar on the reuse water and the project that they're working on down there, which is a billion-dollar project, by the way. It's not cheap to put that in. But he said, one of the concerns obviously with reuse is drinking that water, right? After it's been cleaned and, and put back into the system. He says, if you've ever been to Disneyland or if you've ever been to Las Vegas, you have drank reuse water because that's the way they do it there. They live in dry areas and they have to find ways to conserve.
So my message would be make sure you buy bottled water when you're traveling.
Stacy, so you're aware, he also said if you've ever drank bottled water, you're drinking reuse.
No, he did not.
Yes.
You're lying.
I am not lying. Specifically Kirtland brand.
What Jesse?
Specifically Kirtland brand, he said.
Yeah, no Kirtland. This is purified right from the mountains.
But it, it really, he also mentioned that the people that drink that prefer it over non-reuse water because the way it's treated, it's not like they, it just comes out of the water treatment plant and then back into your, your drinking water. Typically what they do is they pump it back into the groundwater where it will sit for two to three years in the ground as it eventually makes its way being pumped through the ground back to the, the original water treatment plant where then it gets treated again. So it, it goes through multiple treatment processes before it's actually reused.
Just has a better taste to it.
Yeah. Wow.
Fascinating. Pretty amazing what you do in a desert.
I think what they were, they, they pump it and replenish the aquifer, right? So there's water already down there, you're putting water back with that water.
Exactly.
Drawing it back out some more.
Very interesting.
Yeah, it's interesting.
I do think it's wise to run clean water through the system, find the cracks in the pipes with clean water first and then before we run sewers. If you want my opinion, I think that's wise.
Truck in what they call seed from other plants to kinda get things going, so.
Don't even tell us.
We'll invite you over when they bring that.
Tell us what you're doing.
Stacy, Councilwoman Beck, another thing that they mentioned is that up here in our area, we probably don't have any concern for reuse water because there's such a demand to get water back into the Great Salt Lake that reuse would divert that water from getting into the salt, Great Salt Lake. And so they, they don't expect or foresee that we'll ever be installing or putting in reuse plants up in our area. Just doesn't make sense.
Okay. So I go to Disneyland.
Yep, yep.
Fun discussion.
If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion on item C. Fascinating discussion.
I move to approve the resolution accepting the twenty-twenty-five municipal water, or wastewater planning program self-assessment report for twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Took, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
C is approved, takes us to D, Parks and Recreation Board reappointments. Mr. Dale G. Robinson. Well, you can, I can read these names if you, if you'd like. These are people that are on the Parks and Rec Committee that currently assigned to Mr. Councilman Landon Took. Served with these people, I've had the opportunity to serve these people. The, the candidates that are willing to continue forward on that committee are Doug Ford, Terry Menlove and Lindsay Duval. And just publicly, I'd like to, to thank them for their years of service and their continued willingness to serve. I know that Dale, you feel the same way about those people, or else you wouldn't bring them to us.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why we're asking for their reappointment. These have been, these have been some stalwarts on our committee for, for some time now and appreciate their service.
Anything from the council on them? I would entertain a motion that does reappoint them.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Took. Roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Item D is approved. There is no closed session after our meeting today. So if there's anything else that needs to come before this body, speak now. If not, we'll adjourn. I'd entertain a motion.
That we adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you everybody for joining us. Appreciate your time.
Thank you George.